Yeah, there we go. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 10th regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. I hope everyone had a great, long weekend. This morning, we have Chaplain James Lyons from Mobile County Sheriff's Office, who's going to do the invocation. And if everyone please remain standing after for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much for giving us script and spirit and my praise and sharing with this community. And we just pray that especially during times of difficulty in our nation and in our world. May I read something, the first one is from Thomas, what's that? The Lord is my life and my salvation, whom shall I fear? The Lord is the stronghold in my life, and whom shall I fear? And the wicked fans against me, because I remember my enemies and my foes, who will stumble and fall. Though the army besiege me, my heart will not be. Though war break out against me, even then I will be confident. One thing I ask from the Lord, this only to our people, that I may dwell in the house of the Lord all the days of my life, the days of the beauty of the Lord and the peace and the strength. Let your presence be with you. Our Father, who art in heaven, who did not leave you, but who has created you, and who is with you, in all your needs. We can do nothing without your reward, without your protection, and protection. We acknowledge your love and mercy for us, and we give the Lord his time and praise and his worship. We ask you to give us blessings and eternal praise in our possession. And hopefully come to you, asking bless us to you, that we can all be remembered for that. Give us compassion, understanding, and respect in light of our own sin. We specifically ask you for as commission to do it, commission to love it, and commission to protect it. The presence of protection and gift of love. What ever in this land, often this knowledge, we hear in the dress and in the turn of the health decision, governing decisions in authority in Mobile County, and a headquarter in the city of Manhattan. Given the greater abundance of grace and mercy in the government, every parent, descendant, judge, we ask you out of hand, the Lord, to bless all over ten of your forces and the faith. We complete state and division of government and leaders. The grace we ask you, blessing, grace and mercy, to help us, to protect us, and all leaderships of our forces, and protection of our forces. Give me the boldness to pray and do what's right in your heart. Give the unity, wisdom, and protection in the strength of the fair and righteous. We specifically ask you, protection provisions of our military forces, remain in harmony with us. To the faith of the people, of Israel, and of Israel, and of the family, who are loved and respected, for the heart. Thank you, Father, for all the daily works, the time, the lovingness, and for the time you spend with us.
Let we pray to the United States of America, and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is my mic still working? I guess, of course, okay. We do have a couple of resolutions this morning, but before we present those, I think Evelyn DeAngelo is here from Love Your Community, maybe with a couple of announcements and maybe some presentations. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, my name is Evelyn DeAngelo, and with Love Your Community, and we are a project program that is a grant-funded program that helps support citizens in our community throughout Mobile County to encourage them to participate in helping us with litter abatement and with sustainability programming in their communities. And so, we're very excited. We have been recruiting new teams. We actually got 12 new teams in September. I think it was a very hot summer, and so, our litter program was a little slow over the summer, but coming into fall, we got a lot of momentum coming. So, today, we wanted to honor three of our Love Your Community teams that have submitted over 150 volunteer hours. And what we're finding is a lot of our volunteers that are committed to picking up litter in the community are already partnering with some of our local nonprofits. And today, the volunteers that have acquired their hours are actually dedicating their funds and partnering with nonprofits for their projects. And so, I wanted to speak individually about each one of these. Our first one is the Revitalized DIP. Their project that they will be receiving $1,500 towards is renovations of Pocket Park at 3100 Dolphin Island Parkway. I think that's near the CVS on Dolphin Island Parkway, and they hold some of their community events and their fundraisers there throughout the year. But there will be some beautiful landscaping there in that area for a nice community pocket park. It's very visible on the Parkway, and so, we're excited to see Revitalized DIP. We'll be working with that project. Do you want to do them one at a time, or you want to do each one? All of them? I'll go ahead and do all of them.
Go ahead and tell us about all of them, and then we'll take pictures one at a time.
Okay. Our second one is the Peninsula of Mobile, and this volunteer group has been working really hard, again, in the Dolphin Island Parkway area and throughout the southern part of Mobile. And they are working towards the project with some new Blue Way and Green Way signage that will be placed in the area to help encourage visitors and locals to get out and enjoy the community and have more education. It will also include a mural that will feature native birds of our area. So, that's going to be really exciting to see that, and the beautiful mural that'll be available in our community. And the third one is Dog River Clearwater Revival, and their volunteers submitted in excess of 700 hours this year. And so, we are so, so proud of the team that Dog River Clearwater Revival has. And they are using their $1,500 towards a project that's purchasing eagle reefs, which are small reefs that are put under boat docks and boardwalks and areas to help attract fish and oysters and shrimp and things like that in the area to help with water quality and to make the areas nicer with the eagle reefs that will be installed. And so, those will be in the Dog River watershed. So, we are so proud of our organizations and our teams. Like I said, today is representing over 1,000 volunteer hours between these three organizations, and we will be presenting more throughout the remainder of the year. We also presented last week at the Chickasaw City Council Meeting, Beautify Chickasaw, is a volunteer, citizen-based volunteer group that's been working in Chickasaw, and they received their check last week. So, we're so proud of our volunteers that have been helping pick up litter and work on sustainability projects throughout our community.
Thank you so much for being here today, and to all the groups. I mean, this is exciting. It's always exciting to hear about these projects, and it's such a win-win program, because not only are we abating litter and helping beautify our community, but these projects, you know, they increase the sustainability and environmental awareness and beautification as well. And so, I'm thrilled and to hear that over 1,000 hours is represented by what's with these groups and with Chickasaw. I just think that's amazing. Evelyn, you do a great job. I see Diane is here today with Keep Mobile Beautiful, and I know that you are working in conjunction with them. And I just want to say thank you for all that you do, and Keep Mobile Beautiful and the partnership that we have and into these groups. They're just amazing, and we love you guys, and just keep up the good work.
And we appreciate y'all's support, and we really do. If I would like to invite representatives from each of these organizations to come forth, and we'll individually present you all with this large check that you cannot take to the bank, but we will get you a real check you can take to the bank, and we'll do a photo op with the commissioners. This is our Revitalized DIP. And they have a big cleanup coming up. You know the date of that? I think that's what. What day is that? December 7th? Great, thank you. Also, in November coming up is, we celebrate November as National Recycling Day, and we will be partnering with Keep Mobile Beautiful and Ransom Ministries out at the Archbishop Wiltzgum Stadium, and we'll be hosting a paper shredding and electronics recycling day that day, and we'll have several cleanups go in on with small groups around the community, and that's November 11th, Veterans Day weekend, but we'll be celebrating National Recycle Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank all the groups here for all your hours of working in our community. And I want to also, none of this would be possible without Commissioner Hudson. She's the one who initiated this and brought it to the commission, although we all support it.
Same effort.
If it wasn't for her, none of this would be happening. So, thank you, guys, and thank you too. Thank you. Dr. Tim Hughes is here. I'd ask him to come this morning and introduce himself to the commission, and I'll kind of introduce him briefly. But Dr. Hughes is going to be on the agenda for number 18. He's going to be replacing Dr. Bowden on the Communications Board in Mobile County, I believe, for the remainder of his term. He had to resign because of health problems with his wife. So, Tim's here. I could go through a whole litany of things about Tim, but I'll let him do that himself. And as you can see, besides being a doctor and an active member of our community, he's also very active with the Sheriff's Office and also the Sheriff's Surgeon. But, Tim, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Commissioner. How much time you got? I'll be brief. My entire life has at any point in time beyond high school been involved in some component of public safety or defense. Started out immediately after high school, graduated from State Fire Academy, worked for the Fire Department in Birmingham for seven years while I finished college, and went through paramedic school at UAB, through the Fire Department, and worked in the fire service for that time. Moved to Mobile, went to University of South Alabama College of Medicine, left, went to University of Wisconsin for my residency training, and then moved back to Mobile. Following that, I served 14 years in the Air Force, and finished out as a senior flight surgeon. Finished my time out at Keesler, but was at several posts during my career with the Air Force. And I've been with the Sheriff's Office about 14 years as sheriff surgeon. I'm assigned to Special Operations in SWAT. I do handle all the medical affairs for the sheriff, but also deploy with SWAT team in Special Operations to take care and make sure that our deputies are safe and try to keep them out of harm's way. Fortunately, knock on wood, we've done a good job with that. And then, I guess now, as well, I still work about 10 shifts a month in urgent care and emergency medicine with urgent care. So, got a lot on my plate, stay busy, but I like to do that, and then get out and do a little work on my tree farm and hunt a little deer, which is coming up, so that'll...
I think he has more hours than his days.
Have time to deer hunt?
That's right.
Did you say you did some shifts in ER?
Yes, ma'am.
Then, you're still involved with Greater Mobile Urgent Care. I think you do an emergency and urgent care there as well, right?
Correct.
The Sheriff's Office is volunteer work. I think he has a real job too, don't you?
Well, I'm on contract with the sheriff, so... But if you saw my check, you know I don't do it for the money.
One of those big checks like we just gave out that you can't take to the bank.
I just do it as a passion to, you know, do what I can to take care of our deputies and make sure that...
Well, it's a pleasure to meet you, Dr. Hughes, and thank you so much for your service to the community.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And next, we have, this is getting long, two resolutions. The first is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The Mobile County Health Department, it will be presented to Dr. Stephanie Woods Crawford, the Executive Director for Prevention and Wellness. And then, we have the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Here from the Penelope House is Tori Ann Porin, the Executive Director. And Commissioner Hudson will be presenting that.
Now, Crawford, this resolution is in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the leading cause of cancer deaths among American women. And whereas early detection and improvement treatment are believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with other agencies such as the Mobile County Health Department, USA Health Mutual Cancer Institute, the Breast Cancer Center, the Breast Cancer at Mobile Infirmary, and Franklin Primary Health. Each care and hard work is a hope to those vitalists that are. And whereas in observance of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, special celebrations are planned throughout the month, including Family Health, the Primary Care Division of the Mobile County Health Department, which provides breast screening daily at all its locations. Also, as a longtime participant in the Alabama Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program, Family Health provides free breast and cervical cancer screening for women who meet eligibility guidelines. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission proclaims October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Mobile County, Alabama. Furthermore, we extend our deepest respect to survivors and those who advocate for prevention and the cure, and it is signed by all three county commissioners and our county administrators. Dr. Crawford, would you like to say something?
As a breast cancer survivor myself, early detection is definitely key. And for us who are survivors, we continue to spread the knowledge and awareness of breast cancer. Family Health, being a longtime partner, and Mobile County Health Department being a longtime partner with the Alabama Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program, we continue to provide those services, and we'll continue to provide those services in our community.
Thank you, Lynn, for being here. Thank you.
You know, I don't know if they can hear me, if I'm speaking like... Come on up. So happy to have you here today. Thank you for joining us, and we just want to know how much we appreciate the important work that you do in our community as well. This is in recognition of the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas once the secret kept in families, domestic violence is recognized as a serious crime, one that has severe consequences for the survivors, their children, their employers, and the community. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals, families, and neighborhoods in this community throughout the United States and abroad. And whereas one in four women and one in seven men aged 18 and older in the United States have been the victim of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas stopping the cycle of this vicious crime requires not only the resolve and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all of us. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, in recognition of Penelope House and its 44 years of service in our community, the Mobile County Commission proclaims October 2023 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Mobile County, Alabama. Furthermore, we urge all residents to actively partner with Mobile County, Penelope House, and the Domestic Violence Task Force to create communities where people thrive in safe and healthy relationships. It's also signed by all three commissioners and our administrators.
And Lynn, do you have any comments you'd like to make and please contribute?
Absolutely. Dana Polk is the Board President, and I wanted her to be here as well, as well as members of the District Attorney's Office and even the Sheriff's Office, because domestic violence is a social problem. It affects everyone in our society, and it takes all of us to address when the problem is active, when we're, you know, arresting people in the community, when we're looking at justice in the system and providing the services for the victims. But it spills over and affects your coworkers, who you go to school with, and everyone else. So, we all need to be aware and just ask people, you know, is someone hurting you? So, thank you for this. We always say, put a little purple with your pink, so October's a big month.
We'll do that. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Sure, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we have three speakers this morning. We have Danny Cordy with Mobile Sports Authority, who would like to give an update. And we have two speakers who would like to speak about number 53, the Creole Road Apartments. So, Danny, would you come on up? I mean, each one's been informed that they have five minutes to speak, and I'll be letting them when their time is wrapping up.
Remind all speakers to, when you come to the mic, to state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
A lot of good news going on this morning. Hopefully, I can add to it. Again, good morning, Danny Cordy, Executive Director of the Mobile Sports Authority. And I wanted to come in front of you today to just give you an update. We just got our fiscal '23 results. But before that, I just want to tell you how much we really appreciate the support that the County Commission gives us. We believe the investment turns into many more dollars for our community, and hopefully, these numbers will illustrate that. So, for our recently completed fiscal '23, which of course runs concurrent with the city and counties, October 1st, September 30th, the MSA attracted, hosted, and supported 39 sports events, which generated an estimated $31 million in economic impact to the Mobile area. And for us, that is a brand-new annual record, really smashing the old record by over 20% from fiscal '16. And again, that goes back to the investment that the county and the city has made in us. Otherwise, you know, I don't know what I'd be doing. I'd be selling cars or something, I guess. So, anyway, those 39 events involve 19 different sports, such as basketball, gymnastics, volleyball, baseball, track and field, wrestling, football, soccer, and even a world turkey calling championship, believe it or not, just to name a few. As a comparison to show the growth over the last five years, the MSA has hosted an average of 32 sports events versus the 39 this year. Again, that's that 20% increase of the number of events. And 15 of the 39 events, I know I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you, and I apologize. The 39 events from this past fiscal year, 15 of those are either first- or second-time events for Mobile. And 24 of those 39 were youth-oriented, which we define as anywhere from ages 4 to 19 in participants. So, and the youth events, and I've said this before in front of you, those are the events that we really like to go after, because they bring mom, dad, sometimes grandparents, siblings, friends. They create more of an economic impact. So, that's always what we would be going after. And as a brief recap from this past weekend of our largest event that we host on an annual basis, the Saturday Sixth Annual Gulf Coast Challenge powered by the Mobile Sports Authority, which featured the Alabama A&amp;M Bulldogs hosting the Jackson State Tigers at LAD, drew about 19,000 to LAD, which really, again, it's our largest event. We don't have all the final numbers and how many visitors. That'll come over the next 30 days, but we were real happy with the turnout. Of course, the weather was great, and it ended up being a great week for us, as, you know, fans had, we had a college and career fair for our local students, several free concerts, a team luncheon, a traditional Mardi Gras-style parade, and of course, the good old game day tailgating at LAD. And the game itself was won by Jackson State 45 to 30. Just to show you, in the previous five Gulf Coast Challenge games, we estimate that 47,000 visitors have come through Mobile, which generated an estimated economic impact, a total economic impact of about $27 million to our local economy by those previous five games. So, and this year, as you well know, we're excited to be adding the Port City Classic to our calendar, and that'll take place November 4th at LAD with Alabama State hosting Grambling. And so, we're adding a second HBCU game to the calendar, and we look for another good crowd to that too, because both those universities have a strong alumni following. And in addition to those two games, we already have 22 more sports events already confirmed for fiscal '24, including hosting the Alabama High School Athletic Association State High School Bowling Tournament for the first time ever, which we just announced last week. And we hope to even add more events during the year. And again, your investment in us has made that possible as we market our unique area to those visiting regional and national event owners, as well as helping to create, grow, and support our own homegrown events. So, I'd like to thank you again for your support, and please feel free to contact us if you have any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
That's all great news. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny. And you'd starve to death as a car salesman.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. The next two speakers, Sharon Fail and Faye Smith, are here to address the commission about item number 53, final plat of Creole Road Apartments. They have a letter that I'll make a copy of for y'all, and Sharon said that she would be sending a video that I will send to y'all as well. So, Sharon, and...
I think Matthew gave us a copy of it.
Okay, very good. So, five minutes?
Thank you for your time. My name is Sharon Fail. I reside at 12-800-CREEL-ROAD in Grand Bay, Alabama. After being formed of the October meeting today, I came to review of some of my concerns over the area. Number one is, any multi-family dwelling or complex will decrease the value of the already established single-family dwellings in the area. Number two, access to Creole Road from Grand Bay Wilmer Road is situated between two businesses across the street from a truck stop, which has several businesses, including an Amazon pickup area. All of these establishments have a continual flow of incoming and outgoing traffic. There are also several eating establishments and businesses on Grand Bay Wilmer Road adjacent to these busy establishments. In conjunction with this, access to and from I-10 at Exit 4 is situated only a few yards away from the Creole Road access. The amount of incoming and outgoing traffic generated by additional vehicles is not feasible and increases the wreck potential at this site. When I-10 is backed up or when evacuation is suggested or recommended, Grand Bay Wilmer Road at Exit 4 is also the route frequently used. Number three, the addition of large septic system being installed in residents using well water would potentially affect the quality of the drinking water. If the water quality is affected and higher levels of contaminants are found, proven by a water quality study, we would be held accountable to provide the cleanup and restore the levels to a safe level. Number four, after purchasing and moving into our property on Creole Road... Number four, after purchasing and moving into our property on Creole Road in twenty-twenty-one, we have witnessed the challenge to the water drainage and flooding to Creole Road that occurs when we have heavy rainfall. This is particularly apparent at the curve located at R.B. Superset Food Restaurant. Removing the natural drainage contributed by the trees with established vegetation and soil to accommodate parking for an apartment complex would accentuate the flooding issue. Number five, since twenty-twenty-one, I observed a numerous variety of birds, many of which may be migratory in nature, that feed in my yard but house themselves in local trees. These was bats which frequent our area, help to keep the mosquito population in check. An environmental impact study that addresses how the addition of an apartment complex to this fragile balance should also be taken into consideration. With my residents being close proximity to the plat being under consideration, I'm requesting that I now be added to the list of those to be notified of any decision made pertaining to this matter. I appreciate the opportunity to present my initial concerns over the Creole Road Apartments proposal. I do strongly oppose the approval of the plat's dismissal as given in the notice sent to the adjoining property owner stated September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We also have Faye Smith to address the same issue. Faye Smith, is this the second or the first one?
Good morning to all of you. My name is Faye Smith. I've lived on Creole Road for forty-something years, and I've seen a lot of things happening in our area. And we have several problems. One is a water problem when it rains, and I'm concerned about the apartments coming in because there is a traffic problem in our area. One of the main problems is trying to get on Grand Bay Wilmer Road. It's all, I had to wait ten minutes this morning to get on the Grand Bay Wilmer Road because of the traffic. We have two school zones in our area, one on Grand Bay Wilmer Road and then another one up the road from the First Baptist Church. Then we have a truck stop across the road where you have trucks coming in, trying to get on the Grand Bay Wilmer Road. We have McDonald's people trying to get on the Grand Bay Wilmer Road, Waffle House, and then the Shell Station and the Subway Station. Then we have a church that is on Creole Road, and it's a massive problem that I think is only gonna get worse, you know? And like I said, we're concerned about the apartments coming in with the sewage, and that's basically, you know, I am not approving, I'm disapproving of the approval of the plat. We were just notified, and we really didn't have time enough to, you know, present ourselves more. But I hope, we have, I took a video this morning at seven o'clock, and it took me ten minutes to get from Creole Road onto the Grand Bay Wilmer Road. And it's just not feasible to have more apartments coming in. And I would, I hope y'all would reconsider. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. I think what we have this morning on the agenda, and Matthew, if you don't mind, you can come up and correct me if I'm incorrect, but I think what we're doing is approving a subdivision of the property, correct? We're not, there's been no, I know it's called the Creole Road Apartments is what it's under, but they haven't submitted any plans for that property, just a subdivision?
That is correct, Commissioner. At this point, it is just a preliminary and final plat to divide the property. We've not received any plans of any type for any kind of apartment complex on that property as of yet.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think if you guys want to be, obviously, I think you were already notified, I think you, of what's going on here and in the future, if you would like to be notified of when they submit their plans and follow the process. I've said this many times, and Matthew can correct me again if I'm wrong, but once these plans are submitted, we just follow the state law, and we have, really do not have zoning or home rule in Mobile County, so it's very difficult for us to deny anyone building anything in Mobile County. But we make sure that they follow the rules and follow the law and what it says about building, whether it be a commercial site plan or a residential site plan. But we'll gladly notify you guys. Matthew, if you don't mind, I think we have your address. If you're not in that area that has to be notified, if you're right outside of it, I think it's adjacent properties that we're required by law to notify, and if you're not an adjacent property but in that general area, I'll make sure that we notify you for future plans.
Did you both receive notification from the, okay. If you will leave us your address, we'll make sure that when the plans are submitted, that we give you notification and get input.
I have a question. Matthew, should this go forward and they submit plans for an apartment complex, would there be any type of requirement that could be placed on the developer to do a traffic study to determine what might need to be done in terms of alleviating traffic congestion concerns?
Yes, ma'am. A requirement for a traffic study would not be unprecedented. We did so on the Cottage Hill Road Apartments, and so I don't think it would be an unreasonable request to require a traffic study and require them to make any improvements that would be generated by their development.
And the concerns with drainage issues, they would have to submit plans that would show how they are containing any runoff from their property, from their development, and how that would be handled and taken care of, and that would have to be suitable, deemed suitable, right?
Yes, ma'am.
By our engineers.
They will need to submit a plan that deals and addresses with any drainage increases that are generated by the development.
Okay.
All righty.
But just an addition, the intersection there at Grand Bay Wilmer Road and Creole Road is a DOT intersection. It's all within the state DOT right-of-way, as well as the area that floods that they were talking about down in those curved areas. That is also maintained by the DOT.
Okay.
Sounds kinda hard to hear, and I wanna get a portion of what everybody's saying. All of the things I'm hearing, I don't understand, but when will we get the paperwork on these apartments, when they gonna be mailed out? I was under the impression that we're gonna get them today, once we come over here.
Well, there has, sir, can you state your name, please?
Name's Thomas Smith, and my land is the Jasons, one of the lots that have...
So there have been no plans submitted for an apartment complex? The only thing that's been submitted at this time is a subdivision of the property. I know that they've got it under the Creole Road Apartment Complex name as the subdivision, but as of right now, they have not submitted. Am I correct, Matthew? There has not been any plans submitted? I mean, it's obvious when you make your subdivision name the Creole Road Apartments what's gonna come, but as of this point in time, they have not had an engineering firm submit any kind of plans to the county to build an apartment complex there. That's probably the next step, once they get the subdivision, and when they do that, we will notify you guys, everyone that's in that area of that.
Well, what wasn't we notified before? It ain't many of us that come up here today, it don't look like. So when do you think that we'll get those run out on paper? That's what they said, that we come up here...
Sir, sir.
...have the kind of information to give us, or we know?
Yeah, I think by law, there's Ricky or Matthew, what is it, ten days, ten days before the public hearing? So it's ten days before a public hearing, like we're having today, it's on the agenda, so you guys were notified ten days before we approve this action.
So you get all that where you understand. Are we ready to go then? Yeah, we've been listening, I think it's...
Yes.
Thank you, sir. If you have any other questions, Matthew will be glad to answer them for you guys. Matthew Barcliffe, he's our engineer, and he approves the site plans and the subdivisions for the county. Just get his card, and you can talk to him.
Are you?
Thank you.
Are you? 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 Are you?
Matthew, would you please give one of them my personal cellphone number? I'll be glad to come out and meet with you guys as well. Yeah. Thank you. And Ricky, and Neil, and whoever we need to bring, we'll come out and talk to you guys. We don't have a problem with that at all. Thank you.
No more speakers, sir.
All right. All right, I don't see, thank you. Thank you guys for being here. I don't see Glenn here, so Eddie, I guess you're gonna be running the show today?
Yes, sir.
And you can proceed.
Number one, approved minutes of the regular meetings of July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, and August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved. Second?
Two, approved list of claims.
So moved. Second?
Three, approve revising the resolution of the Mobile County Commission conference and meeting schedule as follows.
So moved. Second?
Four, approve revising agenda language in the September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three minutes, item number four, to read as one-time non-recurring benefits instead of one-time recurring benefits.
So moved. Second?
Five was voted at the conference. Six, accept subgrant award from Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of one hundred thousand for the period from September first, two thousand twenty-two, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, for Mobile County Sheriff's Office. No local match required.
So moved. Second?
Seven, authorize renewal of the sub-recipient agreement with Goodwill Easter Seals of the Gulf Coast for the Mobile County Recycle Center program support for a period of two years for an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred per year.
So moved. Second?
Eight, approve paying approximately nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for box lunches for forty-two vendors participating in the county's health fair on October tenth through October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Seven hundred and fifty dollars for bottled water, apples, popcorn, and two hundred and fifty dollars for decorations. The total cost not to exceed an amount of two thousand dollars and will be paid from Cost Center One, Fund One.
So moved.
Second, could we go back number seven for a minute? And I didn't catch this in our pre-conference meeting. It is no longer Easter Seals, it's Goodwill of the Gulf Coast.
What's the new name?
Goodwill of the Gulf Coast. There's not that affiliation anymore.
Yes, Pam, we'll make that change.
Thank you.
And number nine was voted at the conference. Number ten, adopt resolution authorizing request of the Revenue Commissioner's Office at the Michael Square Shopping Center to dispose of certain items for fixed assets inventory list to clear a surplus and authorize items to be disposed by lawful means.
So moved. Second?
Eleven, approve license support and renewal with SamSara for GPS tracking licenses under the current purchasing cooperative Sourcewell contract in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ten cents beginning year one, and eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ten cents beginning year two, will be paid from Environmental Services.
So moved. Second?
Twelve, approve contract with TerraCon Consultants to provide professional environmental services related to the completion of NEPA environmental reviews. This contract will be for a one-year term commencing on October twelfth and shall expire on October eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved. Second?
Thirteen, authorize submission of letter to dot gov domain registration requesting that the domain name MCEMAAL.gov be delegated to Mobile County to be used by the Mobile County Emergency Management Agency and authorize the commission president to sign.
So moved. Second?
Fourteen, approve change order number one with McElhenney Construction Company for Project Chickasaw Park Improvements, Disc Golf Course Improvements. This change will decrease the contract by sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents. The final contract amount is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
So moved. Second?
Fifteen, approve contract amendment number four with Moffett Nickel for project Redeveloped Ballabattery Docks to add construction, engineering, and inspection services.
So moved. Second?
Sixteen, accept grant award and sub-recipient agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Ballabattery Collection System Lift Station upgrades in the amount of fourteen million five hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, with no match required and authorized execution of all associated documents.
So moved. Second?
Seventeen, approve application for transfer of retail beer and table wine alcohol licenses from Tiffany Abston to Cleopatra Dixon for GB Highway one eighty-eight Quick Stop in Grand Bay.
So moved. Second?
Eighteen, accept resignation of doctor Stephen Bowden and approve appointment of Dr. Timothy E. Hughes to serve the remaining term that will expire November twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Mobile County Communications District.
So moved. Second?
Nineteen, authorize submission of the grant continuation application to the Corporation for National and Community Services for the continuation of the AmeriCorps Retired Senior Volunteer Program in the amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred for the project period April first, two thousand twenty-four, through March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. This amount includes annual funding in the amount of sixty-five thousand plus a one-time augmentation of two thousand five hundred to cover expenses for program staff to attend national convening in addition to other training.
So moved. Second?
Twenty, approve sub-recipient agreement with the Utilities Board of the Town of Citronelle Doing Business of South Alabama Utilities in the amount of one million six hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred in American Rescue Plan Act funds for Escataba Area Water Storage Tank.
So moved. Second?
I think Mr. Ross said this should be...
We found out that cities of...
Was it town?
Twenty-one, approve letter of support of Comcast Grant Application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund for one broadband project in the county.
So moved. Second?
Did we get a second on number twenty? Okay.
Twenty-two, approve change order number one with S.C. Stagner Contracting for Project Isom Clement Memorial Civil Rights Park. This change order will increase the contract by twenty-nine thousand one hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents and increase the contract time by forty-two days. The new contract amount is one million three hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-three, approve contract amendment number eight to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Motte McDonald, Alabama, dated June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, to add Task Ten Rebid Services for Project Escataba Hollow Park and Campground Improvements, Phase One B. Costs associated with this award will be paid from Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act Bond Funds.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-four, authorize re-advertising and receiving bids for Escataba Hollow Park and Campground Improvements, Phase One B.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-five, approve customer service agreement between the Mobile County Commission and Logical... and Logical Computer Solutions to provide the probate court with necessary technological support for its email systems for the period of October twenty-fourth, two thousand three, through October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-six, for a monthly fee of one hundred and sixty dollars per month pending legal review.
So moved, second.
Twenty-six. Approve amending annual appropriation contract with the Mobile Museum of Art to increase the contract amount from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, the additional funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand from District One Commission Funds for Elegies Exhibition.
So moved, second.
Twenty-seven. Approve sponsorship agreement with the Grinds Young Entrepreneur Academy in the amount of one thousand from District One Education Funds for its Grind Awards Event.
So moved, second.
Twenty-eight. Approve professional services contract with Impact Public Affairs Consulting in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and eight dollars from District One Education Funds for facilitating and administering the Mobile County Community Remembrance Project.
So moved, second.
Twenty-nine. Approve sponsorship agreement with the Child Advocacy Center in the total amount of two thousand five hundred for its Serve It Up With Love Tennis Tournament. Funds will be divided as follows.
So moved, second.
Thirty. Approve sponsorship agreement with Rappahoe Children's Retreat Foundation in the total amount of one thousand for its Turkey Trot For Hope Event. Funds will be divided as follows.
So moved, second.
Thirty. Approve sponsorship agreement with Our Sisters Closet in the total amount of one thousand five hundred for its Purse With A Purpose fundraising event. Funds will be divided as follows.
So moved, second.
Thirty-two. Approve appropriation contract with Opportunity for Entertainers and Performing Arts in the amount of five thousand from District One Education Funds for the Opportunities Day School Tour, Mental Health and Education Fair, and Talent Show.
So moved, second.
Number thirty-three was voted at the conference. Thirty-four. Approve appropriation contract with Inspire U in the amount of five thousand from District One Commission Funds for its Sisters For Life Health and Wellness Expo.
So moved, second.
Number thirty-five. Hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against the petition to designate an industrial park filed by Chicago Deer River Property, Real Estate Equity Investments, Theodore Industrial Canal Land, and Office Properties.
This public hearing is now in session. Are there any comments for or against? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Thirty-six. Adopt resolution approving the petition to designate an industrial park filed by Chicago Deer River Property, Real Estate Equity Investments, Theodore Industrial Canal Land, and Office Properties.
So moved, second.
Thirty-seven. Approve real property certification between Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources as recipient, the Mobile County Commission as sub-recipient, and Utilities Board of the City of Balabatri as owner for the extension of the effluent force main from Balabatri Wastewater Treatment Facility.
So moved, second.
Thirty-eight. Consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved, second.
Thirty-nine. Approve appropriation contract with the Explorer Center doing business as Explorium Science Center in the amount of fifteen thousand from District Two Education Funds for its Spring two thousand twenty-four Exhibit Cuba.
So moved, second.
Forty. Approve sponsorship agreement with Row Alpha Chapter of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity in the amount of one thousand from District One Commission Funds for its forty-seventh, Alabama statewide organization convention.
So moved, second.
Forty-one. Approve appropriation contract with the City of Sims in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred from District Two Commission Funds for replacement of windows at the Sims Senior Center. And we will remove Blackwell Home.
And, yes, thank you.
So moved, second.
Forty-two. Approve professional services contract with Matthews Educational Consultant in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand forty-four dollars from District One Commission Funds to produce a community theater production.
So moved, second.
Forty-three. Approve change order number one to statement of work number five, contract with Alight Solutions, amending statement of work dated August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three to increase the amount up to eighty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for aligned resources and add additional costs for travel expenses and will be paid from Cost Center One, Fund One.
So moved, second.
Forty-four. Approve change order number four to statement of work number four, contract with Alight Solutions, amending statement of work contract dated March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to extend hours where needed due to critical issue support and longer-running triage processes in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and will be paid from Cost Center One, Fund One.
So moved, second.
Forty-five. Approve amending the Mobile County Commission Employee Development Program to modify the policy terminology, replace the term incentive with merit effective November first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved. Second. Stay.
Number forty-six. Award bid to Dorsh Figures, Figures and Son for Jeremiah A. Denton Airport, replacement of bulkhead phase two, including all four additive alternates, for their low bid in the amount of one million four hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
So moved, second.
Forty-seven. Approve work authorization number three with Michael Baker International for bidding and construction services for Jeremiah A. Denton Airport, replacement of bulkhead phase two.
So moved, second.
Forty-eight. Approve pre-application for federal assistance for the Jeremiah A. Denton Airport in the amount of one million five hundred and ninety thousand for Jeremiah A. Denton Airport, replacement of bulkhead phase three. Also adopt a resolution authorizing the Mobile County Commission to make application to the State of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for state airport funding in the amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. This pre-application and resolution requests available reimbursement for Jeremiah A. Denton Airport, replacement of bulkhead phase three.
So moved, second.
Forty-nine. Authorize advertisement and receiving bids for Project Pritchard Streets Resurfacing.
So moved, second.
Fifty. Award bid to HCL Contracting for Project McDavid Road Grade Drain Base and Pay for their low bid of one million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
So moved, second.
Fifty-one. Approve EFP project to furnish and deliver five truckloads of sand clay-based material to McDavid Jones Elementary School for the estimated cost of one thousand dollars.
So moved, second.
Fifty-two. Authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deed and or easement from the following property owner for the following project.
So moved, second.
Fifty-three. Approve preliminary and final plat of Neil Sales Addition to Celest Road and preliminary and final plat of Vanel Place and preliminary and final plat of Herbert H. Broton and Deola Quinn and preliminary and final plat of Krill Road Apartments.
So moved, second.
Fifty-four. Approve EFP project to furnish and deliver one truckload of washed sand to Baker High School for the estimated cost of six hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved, second.
Fifty-five. Authorize advertising, authorize advertising and receiving bids for safety improvements on Bellengrave Road. This project will have a reimbursement of eighty percent of the bid amount from the Alabama Department of Transportation.
So moved, second.
Fifty-six. Approve final plat of Valor Ridge Subdivision and accepting road rights of way as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets and accept the roads of this subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as it affects said roads and accept the warranty deed for this, for the rights of way indicated on this plat.
So moved, second.
Fifty-seven. Approve hold harmless indemnity agreements fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four for the following, for the use of county equipment from the following entities.
So moved, second.
Fifty-eight. Approve assigning a contract for professional engineering services for Jeff Hamilton Road, replacement of Structure one twenty-seven and road realignment to Thompson Engineering. Costs to be paid from Cost Center one forty-six, Fund one sixteen.
Brian, is this, is that the bridge west of Johnson that we're, that we've lowered the?
Yes, sir, the one in the curve that has that super elevation in it that we just had to reduce the postings on?
We're gonna re, we're gonna be realigning Jeff Hamilton Road, or is that what?
Yes, sir, we'll redo some approaches west and east side of that bridge, trying to flatten out that curve a little bit, so it'll be slightly inside of where the existing bridge is.
Thank you.
So moved, second.
Fifty-nine. Approve assigning a contract for professional engineering services for Gulf Coast Road Bridge Rehabilitation to Thompson Engineering. Costs to be paid from Cost Center one forty-six, Fund one sixteen.
So moved, second.
Sixty. Authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Sport, Sportsplex Drive, Grain, Grade Bank, Grade Drain Base and Pay.
So moved, second.
Commissioners, we do have one add-on. Add-on number one. Approve letter of support for C Spire's Grant Application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund for one broadband project in the county.
So moved, second.
Item sixty-one. Announcements or and or comments?
Do you have any? I have none.
Sixty-two. Approve request for motion to adjourn until October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved, second.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Everyone have a good week.